Good morning and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for April 14th, 2014. Our tradition is to present the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation prior to calling the meeting officially to order. This time I'd like to introduce Reverend Leonard Akers from Hollydale United Methodist Church off Potter Springs Road, who will present our invocation. That'll be followed by the pledge, which will be presented by Officer Joseph Powell, who has been with the Cobb County since 1995, where he is assigned to Precinct One. He is currently assigned to the Step Unit, where he is an accident and reconstructionist and traffic homicide investigator. Thank you gentlemen for being here today. For those who wish to do so, please rise for the invocation and the pledge.
Let us pray. Gracious Lord, we thank you for this day. We pray that on this day you might help each one of us to set aside any and all the distractions of our day-to-day lives, so that we might be present and available for anything you might have us to do today. We pray that you would give us a sense of purpose, a sense of clarity. We pray that you would simply be with us. Help us to remember that no matter what we are doing in our day-to-day lives, we can always seek you out and be people of compassion and kindness, seeking mercy and justice in all that we do. We humbly pray for your presence now. We pray all of this in the presence of your Spirit and in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend, thank you Officer. Appreciate you gentlemen being with us this morning. I'll now call this meeting officially to order, and we begin our morning with Tab One, Presentations, of which there are six. Our first presentation is to present the First Quarter Customer Service Excellence Award to the outstanding employees on behalf of the Cobb County Customer Service Award. Mr. Hosack, Director Hosack, Commissioners if you can come up for him, please.
Welcome to our meeting this morning, and I would like to thank for the Commissioners for coming down with me. Several years ago, the county embarked on this program to recognize our employees that go above and beyond to provide outstanding customer service. This is a really unique award in that it is based on nominations by both internal and external customers, and really kind of focuses and is judged by a panel of peers as far as is this really above and beyond the normal terms of your job. So, the awardees today should be congratulated. They have done an absolutely outstanding job, and again have been recognized by one of our external customers or perhaps from an internal customer. Basically, all of the awardees are surprised at their workplace by the county manager visiting. This gives all of the folks in their workplace a chance to see that they are being recognized for delivering exceptional service. Earlier this morning, we had a breakfast with the Commissioners, heard some customer service remarks from one of our Commissioners, and we took a photo with the Chairman. So, we hope that it is a special day for the employees and their guests that are here today. Later, at the end of the year, all of these employees are going to be eligible to compete for the Customer Service of the Year Award, and we think that's special as well. So, with that being said, Kristen, if you could go ahead and introduce our nominees or our awardees, excuse me.
Thank you Director Hosack. Good morning Chairman, Commissioners and special guests. On behalf of the Customer Service Council, it is a great honor to present the first quarter winners of the Cobb County Customer Service Excellence Award. Today, we will recognize four employees. Each of these employees was nominated by their coworkers for consistently going above and beyond the call of duty when it comes to providing customer service excellence. This morning, we are pleased to give them formal recognition. Please come forward as I call your name. Our first honoree this morning is Sandy Cranshaw. Sandy works in the Water Systems Customer Service Call Center. Sandy is a superstar when it comes to handling customers with unique issues. She has received numerous accolades from Cobb County residents praising Sandy for her in-depth investigative skills, patience and understanding. One resident received a notice stating he owed the water system a large amount of money. After doing research, Sandy found that the letter the resident received was fraudulent and part of a broader scam. Keep up the great work Sandy, you're making an enormous impact on our residents. Our next winner, Julia Drake, is a Public Service Technician III for the Structural Plan Review Section of Community Development. She is receiving this award today for her can-do attitude in helping those with permit problems. One contractor said, "We all are busy," and that includes Julia, "but she worked with me on getting a list together of all the open expired permits per general contractor that were putting a hold on getting new work started." By doing this, I was able to take the list to my customers, and in turn contractors got their inspectors and COs completed. I think we were able to permit at least 20 sites just by the extra step Julia took. Julia, you are an example of what it means to provide customer service excellence. We are proud to call you a Cobb County employee. Marie Jernigan is our next honoree. Marie works for Parks as a Recreation Leader. Patrons around Cobb County believe that Marie goes above and beyond what her position requires. One example of this occurred when a recreation teacher encountered a family emergency, leaving the instructor unable to finish teaching her pottery class. Marie willingly volunteered to complete the class and glaze and fire the pieces. Thank you for your diligence Marie, we're proud to have you as part of the Cobb County team. Our final recognition this morning is for Dan Larkin. Dan works for Fire and Emergency Services as a Maintenance Technician III. In the short period of time since he joined Fire and Emergency Services, Dan has already
Commissioner Burrow.
Good morning, everyone.
made an impact to the organization and has received numerous accolades for his work ethic
Here comes our Sons of the American Revolution.
and his ability to fix things outside of his realm.
This is quite an honor for me to present this to you all for Patriots' Day.
One such incident occurred when Dan was able to fix the clock on the Tower of Station Five. The tower had been broken for many months.
We can't do enough to honor our great nation and those that have served and defended us
By fixing the clock, he saved the county thousands of dollars that would have been spent hiring a contractor to fix the problem. Thank you for your outstanding efforts and focus on customer service Dan.
and protected us, so. Y'all look very dapper up here.
You are an asset to Fire and Emergency Services and to Cobb County.
Can we get a picture now?
Ladies and gentlemen, these are our First Quarter Customer Service Excellence Award
I'm going to read the proclamation, and then I'm going to ask you Wayne if you want
winners.
Very quickly, just by a show of hands, could we have all the coworkers and the guests of our awardees just kind of raise their hands so we could recognize you?
to say a few words and introduce the group.
Thank you, and let's give them one more round of applause before our photo.
Whereas, prior to 1775, the eastern part of the United States mainly consisted of British colonies controlled by Great Britain. The first battles for our nation's freedom in the American Revolution were fought in the areas of Lexington and Concord, Massachusetts. And whereas, on April 19th, which marks the date in 1775, when those towns near Boston were marched on by British regulars in an effort to confiscate munitions of the local militia, the results were the shot heard round the world, and the eventual defeat of the redcoats at that engagement now celebrated as Patriots' Day. And whereas, on April 19th, 1778, Colonel Sam Elbert, commanding three Georgia Navy galleys, Lee Washington and Bullock, encountered three British ships in the Frederica River near St. Simon's Island. After five hours of naval action, the British ships were captured by Colonel Elbert and the Georgia Navy. This victory boosted patriot morale and caused the British to delay the invasion of Georgia by more than eight months. And whereas, Patriots' Day serves to remind citizens of the American Revolution and the sacrifices endured during the years of struggle for American independence by patriots. Now therefore, we the Cobb County Board of Commissioners do proclaim April 19th, 2015, as Patriots' Day and encourage all residents to become more knowledgeable of the bravery of our forefathers as they strive to establish the United States of America, this 14th day of April, 2015. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, thank you so very much. Thank you. It is an honor to be here on this day. 240 years ago, the colonists set on a mission to establish a great nation up against the greatest military power known to mankind at the time. This ragtag army set forth and won and established the greatest nation today on God's green earth. And we certainly have a lot to be proud of on this day. We have traced our lineage back to those who have participated in establishing this great nation, and we're just honored to be up here today and thank you for presenting this proclamation and honoring April 19th as Patriots' Day. At this time, with your permission, I'll just hand off the microphone and let everybody introduce themselves. We have two chapters of the Sons of the American Revolution, and our mission is to promote patriotism and to teach and preserve the history of the founding of this great nation. And I'll start off to my right here from the Piedmont Chapter.
I'm Bob Shaw, a member of the Piedmont Chapter, Georgia Society, Sons of the American Revolution.
I'm Jerry Slate, Chapter, John Collins.
Bob Sapp, Piedmont Chapter.
Bob McCleskey, Piedmont Chapter.
Bill Cable, President Piedmont Chapter.
Harry Hagan, President of the Captain John Collins Chapter.
Lee Holsey, Vice President, Captain John Collins Chapter.
Thank you all so very much, and thank you for keeping patriotism alive in this great United States and for all you do. God bless you. And now we'll get a picture.
Item Three is the Board of Commissioners recognizing marches as Women's History Month and the Cobb County NAACP's 13th year celebrating Women's History Month. Commissioner Burrow.
Commissioner Cupid's going to join me. Ms. Bonner?
Yes.
Is there anyone else from your group that would like to come up? No?
All the dead members, we don't let them say it.
That's okay.
Yeah, they can come down.
We're not allowed. I'm going.
I apologize that we're a little late on this proclamation. March was Women in History Month, and due to conflict in schedules, we were not able to present this at the March meeting, so we're doing it this morning. And we have Ms. Deanne Bonner from the Cobb NAACP Chapter, who hosts a luncheon for, I guess, the last 11 years, 11 or 12 years?
13th year.
13th year. And honors women in history. And I think last year, Ms. Cupid was one of the honorees, and this year, our newest Judge, Joyette Holmes, was honored at the luncheon. So, I'm going to read the proclamation and then say a few words, have Ms. Bonner say a few words about her women in history. Whereas, American women of every race, class, religion and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless ways. These women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural and social role in every aspect of this nation. And whereas, today, more women are their family's main breadwinner than ever before. Women make up almost half of our nation's workforce. More than 60% of women with children under the age of five are in the labor force. This increasing participation of women in our workforce has bolstered our economy and strengthened our families, and it has demonstrated that the policies that benefit women and working families benefit all of us. And whereas, women have played unique roles throughout history by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force and were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic and cultural institutions. And whereas, American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, women serve as leaders throughout industry, civil society, all levels of elected office, as well as judicial system and their outstanding achievements affirm to our daughters and sons that no dream is beyond reach. Now therefore, we the Cobb County Board of Commissioners do hereby designate March as Women's History Month. We recognize the Cobb County NAACP as they celebrate this month at their 13th annual luncheon to commemorate women's struggles, celebrate centuries of progress and reaffirm our steadfast commitment to the right, security and dignity of women in America and around the world. And this is the 14th day of April. Thank you. Ms. Bonner, you're not only an asset to the Cobb Chapter NAACP and all the work you do, but to this great community of Cobb and our state, and we appreciate all that you do, not just for this organization, but in all of Cobb and our state. And I believe you were recognized last year with the State Award, so we just appreciate you and your organization and all that you do for the citizens of Cobb.
I'd like to thank Commissioner Burrell and the Cobb County Board of Commissioners. We do have an annual Women's History Month that we celebrate women. It's a great opportunity for us as women to get together, but we're so happy that men support us, and it's a testimony to Cobb County that these three Commissioners are also a member of the NAACP, and we appreciate that. We continue to try to work to make this a place where we all can share in the greatness of Cobb County. On that luncheon, we also, we honored four women. We honored the new Judge Joyette Holmes, we honored Rose Wing, the Chair of the Republican Party, we honored Diane Nichols of the Democratic Party, and also Jareen Grimes. So, it's a great event. We were happy to continue that tradition of women just getting together and being women. And it certainly is an honor today for me to accept, on behalf of the Cobb County Branch NAACP, this award from you Commissioners. Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Can we do that first? Thank you. Our fourth item is to present Sterling Triumph Innovators of the Next Generation, Inc., a certificate in recognition of their quality enrichment and encouragement programs for South Cobb youth. Commissioner Cupid.
Good morning. Today I have the opportunity to recognize Geneva Vanderhorst and Steering Innovators into the Next Generation, Inc., also known as STING, or excuse me, Steering Triumphant Innovators into the Next Generation, for their outstanding work in our community. I happen to have met Ms. Vanderhoist several years ago when she was just starting this organization and had an idea to work with the young people in the South Cobb area. Today, she's celebrating her fifth year of helping young persons consider their aspirations of going to college, and I believe you recently came back from your fifth annual college tour. And I appreciate you for exposing so many of our young people to opportunities throughout the state of Georgia and for being willing to sacrifice your time. You have a son that's already in school, but being willing to sacrifice your time to care about others who are following him. With that, the Board of Commissioners has a certificate that we would like to present you with. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners honors the nonprofit organization Steering Triumphant Innovators of the Next Generation, better known as STING, for providing quality enrichment and encouraging programs to South Cobb youth in the middle and high school age range. Our young people will be exposed to higher education during the organization's fifth annual Georgia College Tour, April 6th through the 9th. We commend STING for its continued positive impact and encourage everyone to get involved by providing meaningful service to our homes, schools and community. Thank you Geneva for all you do. Would you like to share a little about your organization?
Thank you very much, and I want to thank Lisa Cupid, Commissioner Cupid, and the Cobb County Board of Commissioners for honoring me with this certificate. It is very much appreciated, and we will continue our service leadership as we lead, steer the young people in the next generation to greatness. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. The next items, five and six, will be combined, and they're to present a proclamation to the victim-witness unit of the District Attorney's Office of Cobb County and Solicitor General's Office designating the week of April 19th through 25th as Crime Victims Rights Week, and to present a proclamation to Safe Path Children's Advocacy Center, designating also the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Cobb County. Mr. DA, if you and the folks that you have here, would you come up this time, any Commissioners that care to join us? So, we have a big group here today for these two items, and we want to make sure that we are humble in our recognition of these two particular items. They're unfortunately a necessary evil, in a very evil world, that we have to have this unit as part of the DA's and Solicitor's Office. But nevertheless, we have some very special people here who work tirelessly during their day to help look out for those folks that are less fortunate and have sometimes some unflattering, rough times placed upon them by folks with no control themselves. So, you should be committed and the Solicitor and all these folks here, you guys appreciate everything you do for our community and for those folks that are quite often just at the end of their rope and quite helpless, and you make it worth moving on another day, another moment sometimes, and we appreciate that. But just to put it a little bit in perspective, crime can impact lives of anyone. In Americans, our victims are more than 26 million crimes each year. More than 3 million reports of child abuse are made involving more than 6 million children. Each year, there are also about 293,000 reported victims of sexual assault. April is designated as Child Abuse Prevention Month and Sexual Assault Awareness Month. In the week of April 19th through 25th is also National Crime Victims Rights Week. We are committed to providing victims services and a criminal justice response that assists all victims regardless of their community. We are dedicated to building partnerships with sources of support, such as community leaders, religious groups, schools and other agencies to better reach and serve those in needs. We proclaim the Board of Commissioners to April as Child Abuse Prevention Month and Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the week of April 19th, 25th, as Crime Victims Rights Week. I want to thank you to the community members, the victim service providers and criminal justice professionals who are devoted to helping victims of crime so that they may support justice and peace. Mr. DA, if you would comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. Thank you. I'm very honored, very humbled to be standing in front of you on behalf of the men and women. To my left, they represent a number of different agencies, prosecutors, law enforcement, victim witness advocates and Safe Path, the Y, and a number of different agencies that day in and day out do everything they can on behalf of the victims of crime in this county. So, on behalf of each of the men and women to my left, on behalf of everyone they represent, thank you so much for this proclamation. Thank you for recognizing this terrible problem and everything that we do day in and day out to try to combat it. Thank you, God bless.
Thank you so much. These are folks that, I can't say it enough, every day they come to work and they work tirelessly in very, very trying, troubling environments, and to be able to go home to each day and put it behind them and work on their own family and be able to come back and do it the next day and do it with such robust enthusiasm and dedication, I appreciate all of you for what you guys do to make our community better, especially for those folks that cry out for help. So, thank you. I have two proclamations. We're going to try our best to bring the group, including the Mayor of Ron, if you'd come up here, please, next to me. Could somebody explain the whirly gigs? Who can explain the whirly gigs?
They represent National Child Abuse Prevention Month.
There you go, perfect. So, folks, if you'd come up here in front and we'll make a couple roll. Hold those whirly gigs up proudly, if you would. Let's see the whirly gigs, guys. This takes us to Tab Two, Community Development Agency. Mr. Dana Johnson, one item.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Dana Johnson with Cobb County Community Development. We are here to ask you to open the first public hearing on an amendment to Section 134 as it relates to private parks. This is the first of two public hearings, so no decision per our code would be made today. The second public hearing will take place on April 28th at 7:00 PM, at which point in time, if the Board so chooses, you can make a decision on that particular amendment. justice professionals who are devoted to helping victims of crime so that they may support justice and peace. Mr. DA, if you would comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. Thank you. I'm very honored, very humbled to be standing in front of you on behalf of the men and women. To my left, they represent a number of different agencies, prosecutors, law enforcement, victim-witness advocates, and Safe Path, the Y, and a number of different agencies that day in and day out do everything they can on behalf of the victims of crime in this county. So, on behalf of each of the men and women to my left, on behalf of everyone they represent, thank you so much for this proclamation. Thank you for recognizing this terrible problem and everything that we do day in and day out to try to combat it. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you so much. These are folks that, I can't say it enough, every day they come to work and they work tirelessly in very, very trying, troubling environments, and to be able to go home to each day and put it behind them and work on their own family and be able to come back and do it the next day and do it with such robust enthusiasm and dedication, I appreciate all of you for what you guys do to make our community better, especially for those folks that cry out for help. So, thank you. I have two proclamations. We're going to try our best to bring the group, including the Mayor of On, if you'd come up here, please, next to me. Could somebody explain the whirly gigs? Who can explain the whirly gigs?
They represent National Child Abuse Prevention Month.
There you go. Perfect. So, folks, if you'd come up here in front, and we'll make a couple roll. Hold those whirly gigs up proudly, if you would. Let's see the whirly gigs, guys. This takes us to Tab Two, Community Development Agency. Mr. Dana Johnson, one item.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Dana Johnson with Cobb County Community Development. We are here to ask you to open the first public hearing on an amendment to Section 134 as it relates to private parks. This is the first of two public hearings, so no decision per our code would be made today. The second public hearing will take place on April 28 at 7:00 PM, at which point in time, if the Board so chooses, you can make a decision on that particular amendment. This is related to a moratorium that was placed on private parks just a few months ago. During the timeframe, staff worked on some additional language for our code as it relates to private parks, which is presented here for you today. So, I'd ask you, sir, to please open the public hearing.
Thank you, Dana. At this time, we'll open the public hearing, the first public hearing to amend the official code of Cobb County, Chapter 134, as presented. Anyone here wishing to speak for or against or comment on this item? Seeing here, none. The public hearing is closed. We look forward to the second public hearing on April 28 at our 7:00 meeting. Any other comments?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Takes us to Tab Three, public comment.
You have two speakers. The first is David Birkenbain. If you'd come forward.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners and the County Manager. My name is David Birkenbain. Mr. Chairman and the Board of Commissioners and County Manager, I'm going to throw a Hail Mary and read all this stuff here. I am providing all you with information on medical burn ban and outdoor burning and its requirements. I hope the information will help you make a decision on enforcing the medical burn ban. It is stated on an application, literally. In my first appearance here, I said it was because the Fire Marshal said it was your fault the way the Commission had wrote the law. This is why I am having problems, so the Commission should have to change the law or get rid of the loophole that is in the law. The booklet I present that has Fire Marshal Guidelines and County Code, Article 7, Section 54, 111 through 54, 118, I feel 37 medical burn ban people in Cobb deserve your interpretation to protect them from outdoor burning. And I say interpretation because, remember, this is what Chief Crater stated to me, as to me, that it is open to interpretation, that everyone will read it differently. So, I am respectfully requesting, Mr. Chairman, you and the Commissioner and the County Manager, interpret the law the way it should be enforced, to have no question on how to enforce the medical burn ban. I'd like to bring out one point, and there are many, but this one says it all. Quote, "Fire Marshal states, 'Please understand that even if you follow all guidelines for burning, you may be required to extinguish the fire if it adversely interferes with another's enjoyment of life or property, or if someone with a medical problem is affected.'" End of quote. This problem I bring up must be a hot potato on this medical burn ban. And now, for the record, Mr. Chairman, the intimidation tactics that I have from my district is on call for and will not deter me from the medical burn ban enforcement request I am trying to achieve. The attacks are on call for and on professional, and I will not entertain their childish behavior. I see why now no one else has come up to speak out. On my last meeting, I had a briefway meeting with three people. The suggestions that we had was the conversation ranged from me hiring the legal attorney to enforce this law, to take a civil suit against my neighbor. And the other question was, did your wife smoke? Yes, she smoked, just like everybody else probably smoked or had lice. Well, it's her fault that she's getting sick. And then, the biggest one was my neighbor has a constitutional right to burn. So, I said, "What about my wife's constitutional right to live?" Oh, well, there wasn't no answer, and it was, "Oh, I'm sorry." So, I will never entertain any of my problems to anyone outside this board because I feel that you all have to decide on this, and it's between, like you said, Mr. Chairman, between you, the County Manager, and Mr. Heaton, and Commissioner Cupid. I'm requesting to the whole Board now that they get involved and give me a hand and bring this to a public meeting, because after you read this pamphlet, I feel that you will understand and interpret this law the way I did, because this is all the information I had to request this medical burn ban, and I'm not getting any support, and I need it. And I appreciate your help on anything you can do.
Thank you, sir. Obviously, this is an issue that's not new to the community, not new to us or the Fire Department in gross. What I will do is make sure the County Manager and the county legal, county attorney evaluate your presentation and seek some time to speak with me and the Commissioner about perhaps if there are any steps to be taken forth, but there is clear balance that we have to try to work through for the entire community, and we'll continue to do that. So, thank you for your comments.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
The next speaker is Raymond Higginbotham.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Just want to take a minute to commend you for all the work you do. You do a lot of hard work every day, and nothing more I can say. I'm without words, you might say. I want to come before you today to ask a question, just some clarification. I'm a professional construction auditor. I've audited nuclear, fossil, hydroelectric power plant construction for Southern Company and, you know, Georgia Power Company, Alabama Power, Plant Vogel in Waynesboro, Plant Hatch in Baxley, Georgia, and going down to Georgia Power Company and auditing the construction contracts with Betol, Avasco, and other large companies. These are long-term contracts in which they have contract escalation, which is nothing but a formula. It's called, well, actually, it's called AFUDC, Allowance for Funds Used During Construction, which Georgia Power Company pumps into the cost of power plant construction that allows them to go before the Public Service Commission and ask for rate increases. We had to audit this very intricate formula that went into the job costs, but there was no performance, and that money was sometimes, you know, AFUDC comes back to the public in the form of little pennies on your power bill sometimes. If you see those little pennies, that's AFUDC coming back to the public. My question this morning is to ask why we are paying contractors interest on retainage. Interest, there's no performance when you pay interest on retainage. The true cost of a project, you got to have this interest returned, you know, backed out of the cost of construction in order to come to a true cost. And why, just, I wanted to know why we are paying contractors interest on construction. I know that interest, not, rather, retainage is withheld from contracts for specific purposes to provide assurance that the contractor, you know, performs the work on time and within the project specifications and that he hasn't overcharged the owner in any way. And before retainage is released, you have an audit conducted to make sure, but there are a lot of things that contractors keep, like discounts on materials and other little things, like a fence around a project he charges the owner for. Then, when he finishes the project up, he takes that temporary fence to another project and charge another owner for it. But these kind of things can be recovered. I have here a previous agenda where $3,500 interest expense on retainage, $3,500. Now, have we recaptured? Has the contractor returned interest that we have allowed him during the course of the project? You know, if he's got 10 change orders with interest on each change order incrementally, when he reaches, you know, the final, you know, total cost to date, what's done with that interest? There are a lot of things I could say about construction jobs. Contractors go out to, you know, builders. They go out to lenders, banks, and so forth. They get a construction loan, and they submit draws against the bank, against the cost every month. They draw on that construction loan. They have to pay interest on that loan. But this interest we pay on retainage can offset the interest he pays on this construction loan. And in other words, does this interest on retainage ever come back to the public?
It's an excellent question. I assume I'm not familiar with the intricacies of the process in which you're talking about, nor would you expect me to know that, or any of the Board of Commissioners to know that. That's clearly a question for the County Manager and his staff, so I would direct the post act to take note and confer with the County Manager upon his return, and perhaps someone can get back to you with a clear answer.
Yeah. Every contract that I've audited in prior years, no private industry, project donor pays interest on retainage.
I understand your comments. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This will take us to Tab Four. I believe that's our last speaker, correct? Tab Four, which are consent agenda. There are two items that will be pulled. That is Item 22 and Item 27. With that revision, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as revised and authorize execution of the necessary documents for the appropriate county personnel. Yep, thank you. Commissioners, remind me that Item Number 33 has been moved to Tab Eight for consideration. So, to recap, Items 22 and 27 have been pulled. Item 33 has been moved to Tab Eight as a regular agenda item. Second, any other comments? Call a question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, for the assistance. This now takes us to Tab Five. Mr. Massimo.
Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, our first item is to authorize the procurement and installation of an interactive whiteboard and associated equipment. The, this is, Transportation Technology is an approved project in the Traffic Management, Traffic Signal Timing, and Planning Component of the 2005 SLOST Transportation Improvements Program. The purpose of acquiring an interactive whiteboard is to leverage technology for improved service delivery and increase work efficiency. Department staff will use the interactive whiteboard for roadway and development plan review, staff training, and project concept planning. We request that the Board of Commissioners, this item is revised, and you have, I think, the pink revised sheet in front of you. The department requests authorization to procure an interactive whiteboard in an amount not to exceed $17,000.
Commissioners, I'll bring this forward in the form of a motion as presented. Is there a second? Any comments? Call a question. The motion carries 5-0. Item Two, please.
Agenda Item Two is pulled, sir.
Thank you. Item Three, please.
To approve Project Number E 2340-WO #10 to the 2013 Countywide Unit Price Contract with Butch Thompson Enterprises for Drainage System Improvements on Mountain Trace. Drainage System Improvements is an approved component in the 2011 SLOST Transportation Improvements Program. We request that the Board of Commissioners approve Project Number E 2340-WO #10 to the 2013 Countywide Unit Price Contract with Butch Thompson Enterprises in an amount not to exceed $24,934 for Drainage System Improvements on Mountain Trace.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Any comments? Call a question. The motion carries 5-0. Next item, please.
To approve a contract with World Fiber Technologies, Inc. for traffic signal cabinet upgrades, Project Number E 5040. Traffic Signals Cabinet Upgrades is an approved project in the Traffic Management, Traffic Signal Timing, and Planning Component of the 2011 SLOST Transportation Improvements Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with World Fiber Technologies, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $140,025.36 for Traffic Signal Cabinet Upgrades, Project Number E 5040.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'll bring this forward in the form of a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Next item, please.
To approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises, LLC for School Zone Safety and Operational Improvements on Post Oak Trip Road at High Tower Trail Middle School, Project Number E 8050. Post Oak Trip Road at High Tower Trail Middle School is an approved School Zone Safety and Operational Improvements Project in the 2011 SLOST Transportation Improvements Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises, LLC in an amount not to exceed $539,660.65 for School Zone Safety and Operational Improvements on Post Oak Trip Road at High Tower Trail Middle School, Project Number E 8050.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Item Six, please.
To approve a contract with Chatfield Contracting for School Zone Safety and Operational Improvements on Spring Hill Parkway at Teasley Elementary School, Project Number E 8090. Spring Hill Parkway at Teasley Elementary School is an approved School Zone Safety and Operational Improvements Project in the 2011 SLOST Transportation Improvements Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $234,997.45 for School Zone Safety and Operational Improvements on Spring Hill Parkway at Teasley Elementary School, Project Number E 8090.
Thank you. Commissioner Ott.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Item Seven, please.
To ratify a previous action by the County Manager authorizing emergency roadway repairs on Lake Chimney Court and approve supplemental agreement number one for Project Number E 2550-WO #04 to the 2013 Countywide Unit Price Contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc. for said repairs. Drainage System Improvements is an approved component in the 2011 SLOST Transportation Improvements Program. We request that the Board of Commissioners ratify previous action by the County Manager authorizing emergency repairs on Lake Chimney Court and approve supplemental agreement number one for Project Number E 2550-WO #04 to the 2013 Countywide Unit Price Contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $46,165 for said repairs.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Item Eight, please.
To approve Change Order Number One Final to the 2013 Countywide Unit Price Contract with Butch Thompson Enterprises for Drainage System Improvements on Bayless Drive. Drainage System Improvements is an approved component in the 2011 SLOST Transportation Improvements Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the 2013 Countywide Unit Price Contract with Butch Thompson Enterprises, Inc. with a savings to the project in the amount of $380 for Drainage System Improvements on Bayless Drive.
Commissioner Ott.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. The motion carries 5-0. Next item, please.
To approve Change Order Number One Final to the contract with D&amp;H Construction Company, Inc. for Drainage System Repairs on Brett Circle, Project Number E 2370. Brett Circle is an approved project in the Drainage Component of the 2011 SLOST Transportation Improvements Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the contract with D&amp;H Construction Company, Inc. with a savings to the project in the amount of $8,639.50 for Drainage System Repairs on Brett Circle, Project Number E 2370.
Thank you. Commissioner Wertherford.
Motion to previous presented, sir.
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Item Ten, please.
To authorize the procurement of hardware, software, and software support services for the Advanced Transportation Management System, Project Number E 5010. Advanced Transportation Management Systems is an approved project in the Traffic Management, Traffic Signal Timing, and Planning Component of the 2011 SLOST Transportation Improvements Program. We request that the Board of Commissioners authorize the procurement of hardware, software, and software support services for the Advanced Transportation Management System in an amount not to exceed $68,770.05 utilizing the Georgia State Network Contract, Project Number E 5010.
Thank you. Commissioner, I'll bring this forward in the form of a motion as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. The motion carries 5-0. Item Eleven, please.
To approve a contract with Center for Transportation and the Environment to conduct an electric vehicle route planning and technology analysis for the planned Cumberland Circulator Transit Service, Project Number E 5030. We request, the transportation planning is an approved project in the Traffic Management, Traffic Signal Timing, and Planning Component of the 2011 SLOST Transportation Improvements Program. The department recommends contracting with Center for Transportation and the Environment, CTE, to conduct an electric vehicle route planning and tech- to conduct an electric vehicle route planning and technology analysis. CTE has the necessary qualifications and experience needed to conduct this very specialized analysis. The department has negotiated a price with CTE in an amount not to exceed $40,000 for this work. The contract with CTE has been reviewed by the County Attorney's Office. And we request that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Center for Transportation and the Environment, CTE, in an amount not to exceed $40,000 to conduct an electric vehicle route and technology analysis for the planned Cumberland Circulator Transit Service, project number E 5030.
Thank you. Commissioner Ott, you want to take this?
Sure.
Don't sound so enthusiastic.
Just to kind of comment on this, I know there's been some questions by folks, you know, the Board issued a contract earlier on to study the circulator system. What's changed since then is technology number one. And this is just a continuation of looking for the best possible alternatives to make sure that the Board gets all the, and DOT staff gets all the information that would be necessary to decide what's the best route to take for this. But the main thing that changed here is the technologies that are available. So a motion to approve.
Thank you. I'll second that motion. Any comments? Call a question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Director. Commissioner Cupid, you have a question?
Yes, thank you Chairman. Director DeMassimo, if I can get your help this morning to address the zoning that we had back in March for Magellan. It was application Z 90. We discussed a road improvement project that was outside the scope of the application that I shared may be addressed in this April agenda. If you can provide an update on where we are with that, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely Commissioner. We actually have very good news. The reason there's not an agenda item for the Anderson Mill Road and Flint Hill Road improvement is that we were able to do the design for that improvement in-house to expedite it with our in-house design team. We are reviewing and making slight modifications to those drawings now, waiting for the right-of-way dedication to be finalized. We're working with Colonial Pipeline on the utility relocation and the project should be ready for bid later this year.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that update. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on Tab is Tab 6, Public Services. Mr. Cannon.
Good morning Chairman, Commissioners, Director Hosack. Today we have three items. The first item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve change order number 1 to the contract with Sutton Architectural Services Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $4,250 for additional professional design and construction administration services related to the redevelopment of three buildings at Fuller's Park under the 2011 Park SLOST Program. Ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Ott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eddie, I know this is just a continuation of the tremendous improvements being done at Fuller's Park, which have been long needed. I know the Board all got the chance to see what you and your staff have done at Fuller's when we went out for the dedication of the Chipper Jones Field. So I think this is another step forward in improving that park. Motion to approve.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Item 2, please, Eddie.
The second item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Osprey Management LLC in the amount not to exceed $1,042,860 for construction services related to the redevelopment of Nickerjack Park under the 2011 Park SLOST Program and authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid.
Yes, motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Item 3, please.
Final item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a final closeout supplemental agreement and deductive change order number 1 to the contract with Top Services Incorporated, reducing the contract by $6,907.25 for savings in revised total amount of $857,92.75 for the construction services related to the redevelopment of Shaw Park. This comes under the 2011 Park SLOST Program and authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you. A lot has been going on at Shaw Park as well. I was out there for opening day and appreciate all the work you and your staff have done.
Thank you.
Make the necessary improvements. And with that, I make a motion to approve.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next tab, Tab 7, is from our new medical examiner, Dr. Christopher Gullidge.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Our tab here is to approve an employment agreement for the deputy chief medical examiner position. As you know, the Commission authorized both a chief and a deputy chief position for the Medical Examiner's Office earlier this year. The position was opened. Nomination Review Committee met consisting of the Chief Deputy Milton Beck, the Dr. Kennedy, the Cobb Douglas Public Health Director, Dr. McMorris from Public Services and Mr. Reynolds from the District Attorney's Office and myself. We identified one candidate. We have since then made an offer and we would like to approve the contract as provided under separate cover. Dr. Cassie Boggs is our choice. She's actually here, right there. And we would like to approve the contract.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, as you know, we're making several steps in the right direction towards improving the services as presented by the Medical Examiner's Office. And this is a step towards continuing on that path. So I would like to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to approve a three-year employment agreement with Dr. K.C. Boggs, MD as Deputy Chief Medical Examiner, effective May 26, 2015, in a form substantially similar to that provided under separate cover, subject to final approval by the County Attorney and authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents. Is there a second? Multiple seconds. Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Congratulations, Doctor, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Glad to have you. Tab 8 is Finance. There are two items. First item, I am going to recuse myself as my wife serves as an employee of MUST and this item addresses a financial grant for that organization. Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you, Mr. Fearsen.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrow. Commissioners, Mr. Hosack. The first item is to request the Board of Commissioners amend program year 2015 annual action plan project allocations based upon the final grant allocations for Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnerships Act and the Emergency Solutions Grant Programs for MUST Ministries. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairman or his designee to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, comments? Call a question.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. We actually have another agenda item, Mr. Chairman, that we've moved from consent to regular, which will be the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority Bonds. And I would do that third. The next item is the Board of Commissioners authorize the Finance Director to seek the most competitive financing working through our financial advisor, PFM Incorporated, for the lease purchase of 800 megahertz radios in an amount not to exceed 14 million, police vehicles in an amount not to exceed 3 million, DOT inclement weather equipment in an amount not to exceed 1 million, and authorize the Finance Director to reach out to the Cobb six cities for inclusion of their 800 megahertz radios in an amount not to exceed what has been authorized in the 2016 SLOST Program. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and to authorize intergovernmental agreements to be created with those cities wishing to participate in the capital lease and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you very much. I'll bring this forward in the form of a motion as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. We'll take item 3 now, which is item 33 from the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to adopt a resolution authorizing Cobb County to proceed with the steps to prepare for the competitive public sale and issuance of the proposed South Cobb Redevelopment Authority Revenue Bonds, Six Flags Area Special Service District Redevelopment Projects, Series 2015, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $10 million for the purpose of financing various redevelopment infrastructure improvement projects within the Six Flags Area Special Services District and paying issuance costs associated therewith and to prepare for the county to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the authority with respect thereto and authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioners, I'd like to bring this forward as a motion to approve as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any comments? Commissioner Ott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When this issue first came up and with the creation of a special taxing district, I basically discussed my concerns that I didn't think that this was the way to go. Those concerns still remain, so I cannot support.
Sure. Any other comments? Yep, Commissioner Burrow.
I too still am not totally comfortable with this and I appreciate staffs answering so many questions and bringing us up to speed on all this. But I still feel that there are too many unknowns for me to support this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I think this project's been worked on for two years. There's a lot of hard work being done by a lot of good people to try to move forward. A very important project and a very important part of the community that needs to be addressed and I support this 180%. And we'll continue to work hard to make sure it gets implemented. With that, we have a motion. We have a second. Any other comments?
Yes, another comment.
Yes, Commissioner Cupid.
Yes. Know that there has been a lot of discussion with respect to this particular item and certainly want to share my appreciation for the Board for establishing the district which applies additional mileage to commercial property owners or non-residential property owners in the area, which would be the funding source were a bond to be approved. I believe that staff has presented analysis to show that that bond would be adequately supported by the funds that would be obtained through particular businesses in the area. And although this is a unique way of looking at financing, I think that it is also a positive approach in that the community of which the bonds would be applied are the ones that are paying towards the improvements in the area and that several businesses have been actively involved in discussion. So with that, I thank the Commissioners who are in support for helping this area to finally get some investment to move the area along.
Thank you. Any other questions? Call a question. Motion carries 3-2. Commissioner Burrow, Commissioner Ott in opposition. Thank you, Jim.
Yes, sir.
Tab 5, we already done. Excuse me. I did. Tab 9 is our next tab, which is our second public comment. We have none. It takes us to Tab 10. Appointments. There are two announcements to be made. Commissioner Ott, use this as the first item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to announce the appointment of Felicia McDade to Keep Cobb Beautiful. The board and she will be replacing the position that was previously held by Michael Power and I would like to thank Michael Power for his service to the Keep Cobb Beautiful Board and the county.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid. There's another announcement.
Yes. Yes, thank you Chairman. I would like to appoint Charmaine Chin to the Airport Advisory Board. Charmaine Chin will replace Mr. Joseph Butch Thompson, who has served as a joint representative between District 2 and District 4. And thank you, Mr. Thompson, for your service.
May I make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
As Commissioner Liaison for the Airport Advisory Board, I was at the meeting yesterday and Commissioner Cupid's newest appointment attended to observe and I must say we were all very impressed and I think she will do an excellent job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Tab 11, I'm going to take his public comments by Commissioners. I'm going to take the liberty of the mic and ask Mr. Quigley to come forward, please.
He's already left.
This county, for many, 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 any, this county for many, many years has been very fortunate to have at the helm of its communications group, Mr. Robert Quigley, who's led us through some very challenging times and has always been there to support us and make sure we try to do the best we can to stay out of trouble, although we often refuse his help. Nevertheless, his dedication to this county and his commitment to the citizens and the employees are second to none. Not only with your ability to work out in the public as it relates to public communications, but also the staff you lead and so many wonderful programs you do and the, your guys that work with you to try to be all over the place, all the time, 24/7, 365, be available, make sure things are happening and managing all that while still doing it such a small staff on such small budgets can be commended. You've been in tremendous assets, the County Managers, the Board of Commissioners, the staff and the community. And whereas it sounds like perhaps you're leaving to go to Anchorage, that's not the case. You've got a long history with your family in communications and you've got a long history personally in law enforcement. You want to tell us about your, the new adventures you're embarking on?
Sure, absolutely. First, let me just say I appreciate those comments. What happens out of the communications offices purely driven by the individuals that work down there. Those men and women come to work every day, ready to go. My presence at the front of that organization is simply that, they make it all happen. The support of the County Manager, the Board of Commissioners and all the things and training and opportunities I've had to learn over the years have been huge for me. And that's made it very easy for me to accept a position with the Cobb Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Neil Warren, Chief Milton Beck had provided an opportunity for me to apply the skills I've learned here, working in communications, a little open records experience I've gained over the last few years as well. And then looking back to my first part of my career with Cobb County, as soon as I got out of college, I was with Cobb PD for about eight years. So it's a great point in my career, after 15 years in this role, to move on to some new opportunities and apply those skills. I absolutely look forward to being right across the street and being there just as quick as you need me to help you out any way I can.
Appreciate this so much. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Ott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I have two town hall meetings that I would like to inform the public about. The first one is extremely important to the folks in District 2, especially East Cobb, to include those folks that live in Commissioner Burrow's district that come down Old Canton Road. On April 21st, next week, I'm having a joint town hall meeting with the Cobb Marietta Water Authority at Johnson Ferry Baptist Church from 7:00 to 8:30. The purpose of the meeting is to bring the public up to speed and give them an update on the 54-inch water main replacement that will be going down Lower Roswell Road, Terrell Mill, Cross Powers Ferry, over to 41. It's also an opportunity for the public to come and see the hard work by staff. We've had a coordination committee for the last six to eight months putting together different ways to inform the public about the traffic, the detours that'll be in place. It's a two and a half year, $40 million project, so it's a big project. So like I said, that's on April 21st at Johnson Ferry Baptist Church from 7:00 to 8:30. And then the following week, I'm having a joint town hall meeting with Mayor Max Bacon in Smyrna. That's on April 29th at the Smyrna Community Center, also from 7:00 to 8:30. And that's an opportunity for the folks in the county and especially in the Smyrna area to learn about the joint efforts that the city and the county work so hard at and also to find out about the many projects going on in the city of Smyrna. There's a lot of new construction and revitalized developments. So that's April 29th at 7:00 to 8:30.
Perfect. Commissioner Burrow.
And I will add that in my newsletter as well for the District 3 residents to attend. I'd first like to congratulate our police officers and the citizens that were honored at the Police Awards and Recognition Ceremony a few weeks ago. We're blessed to have such fine officers and citizens as part of our Cobb County community. And also congratulations to our customer service first quarter award winners this morning. We appreciate all the service that you provide. For announcements, the Neighborhood Safety Commission will be hosting a panel discussion. The Community Awareness Committee April Panel Discussion entitled Protecting Our Children will be tomorrow, Wednesday, April 15th at 7 o'clock here in this room. And the discussion will also be broadcast live on TV 23. On this Saturday, April 18th, is the Great American Cleanup. Keep Cobb Beautiful will be hosting the Great American Cleanup Keep Cobb Beautiful will be hosting the Great American Cleanup with Community Recycling Event. They will accept electronic recycling, shoes, clothing, documents, paint, batteries, and other materials. The event will occur at Sprayberry High School at 2525 Sandy Plains Road in Marietta this Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00. For more details, visit keepcobbbeautiful.org. On May 7th, we, Cobb County Purchasing and the Keep It in Cobb Committee will host another How to Do Business with Cobb Seminar in conjunction with Cobb County School District, and that will be on Thursday, April, I'm sorry, Thursday, May 7th at 5:00 p.m. here in the BOC meeting room as well. It is free to attend, but you do need to register, and you can call my office or email my assistant, Inger Everhart, at cobbcounty.org. And last but not least, save the date, May 16th, Cobb County Animal Control will host its semi-annual Forever Fest from 10:00 to 4:00 at the shelter. May 16th, 10:00 to 4:00, come take home your new best friend. Thank you.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Many of you may know and have remembered that over the past few years, we've had some issues with retention and with public safety, and Director Heaton and Chief Hauser have embarked on a improvement plan, many of which are implemented and in progress, hiring additional officers, creating additional academy to train those officers, as well as some differential in pay and shift changes. But today, we implemented another one of those great steps forward, and that is the purchase of the first 50 of police take-home cars. And I'm very proud of that. I'm very proud of the progress we're making. That along with the 15 that we got with a grant, we're going full steam ahead in implementing the police improvement plans. So that was a great thing that we did today, and I'm proud that that is being begun and being started. Secondly, I'd like to thank Mr. Hosack for doing a great job of sitting there looking pretty and not saying a whole lot as acting county manager. He did a great job there. And probably one of the greatest accomplishments today is I pushed every button correctly, and I think I've finally arrived. You know, I believe I know how to do that up here now, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cupid.
Congratulations, Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you, Ms. McDade. I couldn't have done it without you, by the way. The PD were rough.
This year, Senate Bill 119 passed to establish May, or the first May, excuse me, first Monday in May of every month as Appreciation Day for Water Professionals. And Cobb County will be appreciating our water professionals by profiling them that first week in May on Facebook. For those of you who want to learn a little bit more about what goes on behind your tab, I'd encourage you to check out our Cobb County Facebook page. That's a resource that we tend to take for granted until something goes wrong, and a lot of men and women work very hard to make sure that we have clean water and a safe drinking source every day. So I encourage you to check out our Facebook page. I want to share also with residents of the district that Commissioner, Planning Commissioner Gault Porter and I have been holding weekly series to educate residents on how to get involved in the zoning and land use process. And we've been very pleased with the turnout that we've had over the past month, but would like to encourage you to continue to participate. We hold the first Wednesday of every month, our meeting in Powder Springs at 6:00 p.m. at the Ron Anderson Center. The second Wednesday of every month for all still zoning cases at the South Cobb Recreation Center. The third Wednesday of every month at Osborne High School and their library. And the fourth Wednesday of every month at the South Cobb Community Center to address zoning in Mabelton and in Smyrna. Our last meeting that we had in Osteau, we actually had an applicant come to the meeting who wanted to address residents one-on-one. And I'm always appreciative of applicants who are initiative in reaching out to the community prior to their cases being heard. So again, I can't encourage you enough to please attend. It gives you an opportunity to speak directly with those who are interested in investing in your area to make sure that there is collaboration on bringing a product that meets the needs on both sides. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the comments. I appreciate both Commissioner Ott and Commissioner Cupid mentioning the water, the attention to water that is coming up in May and with the town hall meeting next week. I serve in the Cobb Water Authority Board, and the capital improvement program that is being deployed through his district is a huge project, but it's one that's very important to making sure that we do have clean water distributed to our water system so that our water system could then distribute it to the residents of businesses in Cobb County. And then the other end of that, they collect it and clean it up and put it back where it came from. So it's a very process for our environment, for our community, and for our state as we engage in conversations with Alabama and Florida concerning water. And if, don't have to look more than 3,000 miles to the west to see how important water is to economy. So I thank you, appreciate Commissioner Ott for having that town hall to educate people on that project, and Commissioner Cupid for bringing it forward. On April 29th, I will be having a town hall in Commissioner Cupid's district at the South Cobb Community Center and Lions Club from 6:30 to 8:00. Invite you to come there if you can. That's on Wednesday, 29th. There's been some signage and information provided that it's on April 23rd. If you show up April 23rd, you will be by yourself. I will be there to 29th, so you may want to go to the 23rd, but nevertheless, I'll be there to 29th for you folks that might be interested in coming to that town hall in Commissioner Cupid's district. To that end, again, I want to congratulate Mr. Quigley and thank him for his contribution to our Board of Commissioners in our community. Not that he's leaving our community, but he's moving into a very important role in the sheriff's office, and I know he'll do a stellar job there as he has here, and we congratulate him on his success. Anything else?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Among the numerous times Mr. Hankerson has contacted me over the last couple days, at very odd hours, I don't think he's used to the jet lag yet, he wanted me to publicly congratulate Robert Quigley and just, and let Robert know, as well as the audience and the board and all the department heads here, that he's probably one of the finest department heads Mr. Hankerson has ever worked with. Mr. Hankerson's very, very proud of him, and I can say, as one of Mr. Hankerson's longer-serving department heads, that I've probably never worked with a more dedicated professional person than Robert. So on behalf of Mr. Hankerson, congrats, Quigley.
Thank you, sir. We adjourn.